Okay, so I'll read our little intro allowing a Zoom meeting. Well, and see if more people filter into the waiting room while I do that. So hello, everybody. As Chair of the Rochester Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Scott as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to Addendum 6 to Executive Order 01-20 and Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. And in accordance with Act 92, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with the temporary amendments to the open meeting law, I confirm that we're providing public access to the meeting using the Zoom platform. And you can hear somebody else that wants to get in there. And you can get access to that by either going to the town website to be the connectivity pathways or look at the posted minutes around town or request a direct email invite from the town clerk. And that's, so just, and that's, is that you Danny and Manzanita? That just entered?
Yeah, I'm gonna mute. And Nancy's gonna be here, too.
Okay. All right. And so we have, I think, everyone, there's no mysterious phone number identities. So I think that we can move forward. Welcome, everyone. You know what this is about. This is basically a hearing about the application on the town is submitting on behalf of the committee that is researching the options for repurposing the high school building. And we have Vic and Catherine here as representatives of that committee that can really present what this grant application entails and what it's asking for. And I think that I will let them take it away from here.
Okay, thanks, Dune, and good evening, everybody. I'll give a few comments about the grant application, what it's for, and Catherine will add to that. And then I think we'll just open it up to comments, questions. It's to take public comment. And as questions come up, we'll try to answer them as best we can. And, and just, you know, go as long as people want to talk. So just again, to be clear, this, this hearing is about the grant application. It is not about a decision for the town to either acquire or not acquire the high school building. It's purely about this grant proposal that the town is gonna submit to do a feasibility study on some program concepts for the, for the building. It's a $58,000 request. It's going to the Vermont Community Development Program, which is a program of the Agency of Commerce and Communication of the state. The, the source of money is Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development that then flows through the state and then to the successful applicants. So, so the money, that's, that's the source of the funding. It's really, it's to provide a feasibility study. And that is, the purpose of which is to enable the town, meaning both the Select Board and the voters of the town, to evaluate if and how the, what would be the most effective use of the, of the high school building with a, with a newer purpose. So it involves a project proposal that is cited in the, in the application itself. If you had an opportunity to read it, it's on the town website and, and it's spelled out in quite a bit of detail there. But just quickly to summarize, it's to meet identified local and regional needs more than just the town of Rochester, but really the Quintown area, in some cases even beyond, for childcare, adult daycare, enhance the economic development and the creative economy through the creation of a makerspace and what we're calling Arts and Learning Center, as well as support other complementary uses that the community needs and would, we feel benefit from. So the, the actual work itself, the $58,000 to be spent on consulting services, where experienced consultants who know and have done feasibility work like this would be engaged to prepare a master site, or master plan for the building itself, would assess the physical condition and improvement requirements to meet the, the needs of the programs that are intended for the repurposed building and, and do an overall operating budget for those set of programs. What would the revenue look like? What would the expense look like? The bottom line, would it break even? Would it not? If not, by how much? And to assess possible funding sources for those, for those improvements to the building, as well as if there's a, if a deficit is determined. So that's, in a nutshell, the, the work that would be conducted in the scope of this feasibility study. In addition to those identified needs, there are, are or may be other needs that will pop up during the course of the study. And we can take a look at those as well. The, one idea that has been suggested to us from the Green Mountain Economic Development Corporation is take a look at housing. That is a, that is a clear need in all parts of Vermont. And they've asked us to, to take a look at housing, low income housing is an option as well. But that's not within the scope of what we have intended to propose in the, in the grant. But we'll take a look at that, too. Catherine?
Well, this, as, as Vic said, the, the most recent draft is, has been posted on the town website. It is a rather dense document, 26 pages, but it follows the specific questions asked of the planning grant. And it's been really a year, with the exception of a few months of the shutdown of the COVID, where we were, our attention was elsewhere, of many people from the community engaging in various Zoom meetings, even some face-to-face focus group meetings over the summer, masked, socially distanced. We, I think it's the, I know it's the consensus of everyone who has worked on this project and who's responded by email to the, to the email account that we set up early on, is that the, the building itself has enduring significance beyond being a public high school as a place for intergenerational activities and social engagement and learning. And I think you'll find that the proposal, the five components of that proposal literally align with this. We, the committee has all felt that we still want to keep the, the wing of the building that houses the auditorium, which is the only auditorium space like that in the entire Quintown area with a 300-plus capacity amphitheater seating. There is no other facility like that around. And we want to keep that accessible to the, to the school district as well. So we don't have everything figured out, which is why we want the feasibility study. We feel that it's important to have the professional consultants to do a well-researched assessment of everything so that the town can have factual information as much as possible to be informed, to vote on whether or not the town should acquire the building. So again, as Vic said, this is not tonight about acquiring the building. It's about getting the planning grant money to do the assessment, to decide whether we're gonna acquire the building. Because even though it's, it's, it could be ours for a dollar, we want to make sure that it's not a gift that keeps on taking, which I know that some folks are concerned about. So we want to make sure that it remains a town asset and one that can pay for itself. And we've got several members of our committee here who could speak to their specific thing. Dick, would you like to talk to the makerspace? Or Robert? Jeff has been involved in the energy assessments. And Dorothy and some other people have been on the Arts and Learning Committee. So please feel welcome to jump in to talk about how you envision how this multi-use facility is going to be a benefit to whatever has been your focus of interest in the months that we've all worked together. Robert?
Before we go off into that, I'd like Vic and Catherine to speak to two points. One is matching grant, I mean, what, what we have to have for a match for the grant. And two, how this aligns with the town and regional plans.
I can speak to the first point. There's a 10% required matching grant, so $58,000 is the amount of funds we're seeking. So $5,800 match, which can be in cash or in-kind service, or any combination of the two. So what we're proposing to the agency is a $2,000 cash match plus $3,800 in valued volunteer time match. And they, they value volunteer time. I didn't realize it was this valuable. It's $25 an hour is their rate with the credit volunteer time. And we would do the, the $2,000 would come from a community fundraising match. It would not come from the town budget or reserve funds, or anything of that nature. There's also a small amount of in-kind service, I think it's less than $1,000, of Joan Allen's time as part of a contribution. Again, in-kind service, it's not new expenditure for the town.
And, and the second point about the, how it fits in with the town and, and regional plans?
All right. So I can, I can speak to the town plan. We, we went through it on Tuesday night. And the Planning Commission found all of the proposed uses consistent with, with our vision, with both the plan and the zoning. And the Chair of the Planning Commission is writing a letter to that effect with respect to the regional plan. We, we had, we had some help from the Council on Rural Development. And they went through the original plan and it's consistent. And we're getting a letter as well from the Regional Planning Commission.
And that's, and those are covered in Items Number 7 and Number 8 in the grant document. And those letters will be attached. Letters are still trickling in, but they are coming in. I mean, I could quote to you from that. Is that what you want? Robert?
No, I just wanted a overview on it. So Dick, would you like to speak to the makerspace?
Sure. So a makerspace is a facility that would probably be a membership facility where anybody from the community can come and use tools and instruction to make whatever. That the hope would be that it would have woodworking, metalworking, electronics lab, facilities like 3D printers and computer-controlled routers, things like that, that people can learn to use. That, and the further hope is that there might be a connected business incubator space where somebody who is trying to set up a business, whether they use the makerspace or not for prototyping or small production, but a space where there would be shared office equipment and low-cost space so that they can get going on a, a business. So we're, we're hoping that this would be a facility that would attract people from the community who are just looking to learn how to make things, want to meet other people who are making things, but that it'll also be a draw, business draw, and that it also could be used by the school and its STEM programs, where they could come, use tools, use things like 3D printer and so forth. And, and there is a lot of equipment in the present woodshop, which would be wonderful if, if the high school building can retain those things. And we already have some donations of equipment for that use.
I would like to say that, you know, this isn't just pie in the sky. We're actually modeling a lot of our plans on the Mint, which is a makerspace in Rutland. And not only have they survived the pandemic, although they took a big hit, they are already, I just was reading on their website, they've expanded, expanded their space. So they're, they're in a growing mode. It's a good indication that, you know, it's a very feasible project. I guess it's just a question of how many people we could attract. They have a very vibrant program where they use, where they have businesses who come, are, are making products using that, using the equipment. And this is something that they encourage. So there's, there, I, there are several businesses, including one business that has all, has placed all their, a whole large room full of equipment down there to, and, and they use it for the business, but also share it with the facility. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of potential in, in that sort of shared use, not only for private individuals, but for businesses.
They also have an entrepreneurial program. So that helps people interested in startup business in a mentoring process. That I think the intergenerational education aspect of this proposal is what makes it very exciting because adult education is not so easily available around here. And this could truly potentially, you know, provide that opportunity for the region. So the other thing with the co-working spaces, the building that was empty for so long across from the Chef's Market in Randolph, that they've turned themselves into co-working and they have 17 units and they, only four available. So that's a very encouraging sign about the, you know, the popularity of that kind of co-working space. And as, as Rochester becomes increasingly, you know, a recreation destination, the, the idea of even having a potential, what they call the passport program, where people who are doing the, exploring the natural resources across the state when they come to Rochester, to be able to have some sort of a, an office space available to them so that they're, I mean, not only accommodations for, for overnight, but, but office accommodations. So we're exploring all the, you know, the possibilities with that kind of space that will certainly help economic development. Lauren, do you want to talk about childcare?
I do. I was gonna say that's a good spot for me to jump in and talk about what we are doing with our early childcare group. I'm the preschool teacher at Rochester Elementary School. For those of you who don't know me, I work with Burley Griffith. I've been there for seven years. So I know a lot of the young families in town and I know the grandparents and the need of the young families. And being in Rochester for a number of years, I've been there during the time that the high school building was closed, too. But I have a draw to do something in that space. And because I do, a couple of years ago, I met with the Fire Marshal to see what he would approve as space that would support an early childcare program. So I know from him where he would say this is where occupancy would be granted without much having to happen to the space, which is the first real step when you open up a childcare. So knowing that space was encouraging, but then we had to pause things. And so now that we're in a new part of being able to soon, hopefully, go into the high school building and do new things, we've made some steps with forming a childcare board for this new childcare. Kayden Hamlin is on it, myself, Burley Griffith, and Michaela Richardson, a preschool parent and a business owner. So having come together, we are now a nonprofit childcare because knowing the childcare world, you want to be a nonprofit so you can receive the most grants as a childcare, which will give to sustainability of the business. Because a childcare is great, but there's also the business side of it that needs to be considered. To see what the real need is, we've put out a survey to the local population, which yielded very positive results. So we know that immediately opening, we would have a full classroom for, we were first thinking of after-school for preschool children because I know that there's that need immediately. For state money, where the state has money for grants is for toddler and infant spaces because those are so difficult to find across the state, anywhere you go. So we would look to open up with a after-school preschool program and have toddler care during the day. And as the need continues to grow, we could expand, hopefully. But that's where we are right now. So when things are further along, we can move along with them. But right now, we're just in full support of this grant to get to the next step.
We've also gotten a letter of support from the One Planet out of the Supervisory Union. They conduct the, the summer programs as well as the after-school. And they're very supportive and want to be involved in this as well. So, and I feel that, you know, having these facilities all under the same roof will have a mutual benefit. To have an Arts and Learning Center with a childcare and adult there will give a potential for expanding the programs of those facilities. Lauren and I spoke, and I think the whole childcare group spoke about, you know, the idea of really, Reggio Emilia, for anybody who knows that philosophy, this incredible childcare program that came out of Reggio Emilia, Italy, which really brought the arts into the core of the learning process. So exciting, incredible work. And they are also excited and aligned with that. So it just, it just, to me, just seems like there is incredible potential at a time when our school budgets for the arts is shrinking. So, you know, it's, it's, it's really that we're offering what is not necessarily as available through the public school system.
Robert?
You're muted, Robert.
Yeah, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Would you, Lauren, would you speak to the previous experience with childcare facilities that members of your group have?
Sure. I have taught at Rochester for seven years. I also run my own childcare business in Plymouth during the summers. And at that facility, it's at the old Plymouth Elementary School. So I've been through the process where an old school gets converted into a community center. Burley has worked with me for four years and has achieved his associate's degree since working in Rochester and is committed to the early education field. And to have a male in early education is very rare and wonderful. I'll let Kayden speak to where she is at with her career in childcare. I think she's better at that.
Thank you. I am a licensed early, or a certified early childhood educator. And I have previously been a preschool teacher for two years. So like Lauren has experienced of the wazoo in comparison. But I, I have experience in childcare. I'm also pursuing an elementary ed degree and I have a little bit left, so. Yeah.
Robert Gardner, I thought, do you want to say something?
You're muted.
Yep.
There we go. You hear me?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
I didn't, I wasn't signaling when I did.
Oh, I thought you were just scratching your head. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Just, the two Roberts at the either end of my screen, put their hands up at the same time.
Do we?
Yeah. Martha, you have something you want to say?
I just wanted to comment that I think that, that of all the many uses for the building, that is one in particular that I'm very much in favor of. I think it, it could be not only a wonderful asset for the young families already in town who need childcare help, but it could be a way to attract more young families to town, knowing that there's something like, a facility like this available. Speaking as someone who moved here 36 years ago with three very young kids, one of whom was just turned one, I did use, take care of, take advantage of using Danteline daycare for my younger one in particular. And it was a godsend to me and to many other young families. So I'm just thinking that this could be, like I said, a way to not only help the ones that are here, but attract others, you know? And we don't want our population to shrink. And it's wonderful to have young families with young kids.
Which actually brings up the other aspect, which is the, the other end of the age demographic, is the, you know, adult daycare. So being a longtime advocate and case manager for the Central Montains Teaching with an office right here in Rochester, gosh, 24 years last month. That's too long. Anyway, I can speak very, very candidly to the elder demographic of which many of us are actually approaching it. And, and, and the challenges of long-term care. I have a very large, what they call Choices for Care. That's a long-term care program in the state of Vermont, which pays for long-term care on a home-based waiver or in some sort of a residential facility. But all of my clients are at, in the community, receiving their services at home. And one of the biggest challenges for caregivers is a daytime care, not just sitting them in front of a television set, but actually providing mentally challenging activities and social engagement. And again, transportation is a big deal. There's one, you know, there's a room literally up in Bethel, where the Bethel Rite Aid is, which is a, a large room that's been run by a wonderful person, Judy Santamora, a nurse for years. Of course, all the Adult Day is closed down during the pandemic, but they've been waitlisted for over a year. And one of the biggest challenges is actually transportation from this valley over there. So I do think that we could definitely, you know, have a very viable adult daycare. And we, and Lolly and I are developing that. And we're actually looking for, in a similar situation, to find somebody or an organization that's already licensed, who wants to come into our facility as a tenant. Lolly, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, I, the idea of doing a senior daycare facility, I think, resonates pretty strongly with a lot of people around here. I think the population is definitely here. I think the idea of it being located within this multi-use facility would make it incredibly unique and probably pretty desirable to a lot of people in the sense of there are art classes going on or theater or just other activities for, for people to be involved. And I do think that there, there are a number of adult daycares across the state and they did close down for the pandemic. There have been quite a few that closed permanently. But they are mostly, the ones that are surviving are mostly nonprofits. And I do think there's probably, the best-case scenario would be to partner up with someone who's already running one, to open up a second location here, that type of thing.
And the good news is there's lots of money coming in from the state of Vermont going into Adult Day and from the, the federal government, funds for the elder care. So that's kind of an optimistic picture right now. So, so that brings us to arts and learning. And we have a very strong and long-established arts community in this valley. And they are independent and, and operating fine, yes. They've been creative through the pandemic. And we really, and we, and they, and leadership from all the arts organizations have been part of these cities. And the strong feeling is for those that have been accessing, using the building, like the White River Valley Players for, since 1974, really, or 1979, when they were established, but they were doing high school productions since the building actually opened, that they have a long-established use. They've maintained that auditorium after Irene. They actually led the, the repair- They actually led uh, the, the repair and upgrade of that auditorium. And Dorothy, you want to speak to that?
Sure. Um, I was the first music teacher when that building opened in nineteen seventy-four. I was the K twelve vocal music teacher and was one of the two music teachers using that room. And seeing the joy and excitement on the faces of everyone coming in to the brand-new building. So it's, it's kind of um, I don't know, hard to fathom that the building could be. If the life of the building could be coming to an end. I think that's, that's hard for me to, to kind of swallow. Um, the players have been in existence for forty-two years and five years before that. Um, yes, there were some high school productions that filled the auditorium. It was back when pretty much the only thing to do with teenagers could do would be athletics, which is wonderful. But it wasn't necessarily what everybody was um, going to succeed in. Some of you know that Mrs. Kirkpatrick, who was a longtime benefactress of the town, gave the money for the auditorium. Would not have had it, had it not been for her generosity. And Dean Martin played a vital part in helping to make that gift um, a reality. Yes, Catherine spoke to our investment in the technical and the equipment, um, the systems in the auditorium. It, it was given, it was built with a very, very basic um. Set of equipment. And over the years, the players have invested money and skill in maintaining. And bringing it up to more professional standards. And then going on to what the building could become for the Arts and Learning Center. I really like the term "the hub." Whoever came up with that, I, I really like that. And I can envision professional summer theater, just loving to be in that facility. And to think what professional summer theater brings to a town. You think about Weston and Dorset and some of these places that have um, just, that has benefited the town great. Greatly. Thinking about Suzuki, which is there in the summertime. Hopefully, building on that, there could be more music lessons that are taught from that building. It has practice rooms, it has facilities that are great for teaching individual or group lessons. It's also a fabulous community gathering place. And I think we're all longing to gather as a community. We've really um, been missing that. And uh, the auditorium is a gathering place. The whole building brings people together. Uh, just two more things. One is uh. In the past, there have been arts organizations that create their own original works. I can see more and more of that happening, especially uh, works that might include some part-time residents. Artists who have um, vacation homes here, who could be working with local people. And teaching us, and I'm sure they might learn a couple of things from us, I don't know. But just the mix of people, I, I really see that as a, as a really positive thing that could happen. And I think the sun is going to uh, make me. Going to the shadows over here. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie, you want to jump in from Rochester?
I, I just want to add a, a few things. Um, for those who don't know, I'm with the, the Chamber Music Society. Um, that's been in town. This is our twenty-seventh season. And um, we, we typically perform, have our performances in the church. And it's just uh, it's just a very, you know, a small chamber uh. Atmosphere. And also, we don't charge for our concerts, so um, the church um, pretty much stipulated. Use the space but don't charge. So it's by donation and it ensures that anybody in town. And can come to a concert and not have to spend money. Um, and we're talking, you know, world-class artists often and, and you, it doesn't cost anything. It's just a donation. But um, some of the ideas, I mean, we would envision more residencies. We had a string quartet come and join us for uh, summers for many years. We provided them housing. And they worked up their program that they would take on the road during the year, and then they would perform that program for us. Um, I see other residencies. We did one about two years ago in Pierce Hall. Where the musicians came and spent many days. So we see that kind of opportunity and I see a different kind of residency of, of different mediums. Um, Dune and Annie are doing a little hostel uh, building. And I think of, you know, having artists come who might be given the grant to, to be here for thirty to sixty days. And work on, you know, whatever is projects they, they want to work on. Um, we love to work with children and adults in collaborative music-making over the years. There's been a lot of those opportunities, bringing in instructors, doing uh, simple adult uh, youth um, ensembles. But I, I, uh, I also want to just mention Suzuki is the one-week camp that runs. Um, under our CMS. Um, the original director for um, Suzuki for many years was an economist. And she did a survey, you know, if you don't know anything about Suzuki training, the parent is involved. And the parent is always in the master class and takes notes. So fa- they come as families, they love to come to Rochester. Teachers come from across the country. They love to sit in the river at four o'clock with their colleagues from around the country. But Jody, the original um, director, determined that it brought about fifty thousand dollars, you know, into the valley. Now, you're talking about people needing housing. So there was a campground, there was the Hancock Hotel, there was uh, Great Bonnet. So the people are spread out. Um, now there's a lot of Airbnb, so they're in different houses. Um, we have to put staff up in houses. So Suzuki is a little economic driver for the week that it is here. Um, and it's used this building for a long time and we hope to continue that.
And it could be the model for other sort of residencies as well.
Yeah, without the building, they would have to move on. Yeah.
Robert, you want to say something? You're, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, I also would like to point out that we're not just talking performing arts. Uh, there's some potential for uh, good collaboration in other types of, of arts. Um, you know, is looking at other maker spaces and there's uh, there's potential for um, things like. Stained glass uh, window making, there's uh, arts include involving welding. There's arts involving um, pottery, which is also down at the, there's equipment down at the school for that. Um, and, and also woodworking. So the, the potential for the arts and learning to collaborate with the um. Maker space and that whole wing of the, of the um, high school is, is a great, great potential there.
And I understand you have forty-eight people who have shown that they're interested in, to participate in a maker space program?
Yes, and about, uh, I've forgotten the number of those, uh, twelve are willing to do things like classes and such. So, that was an immediate response just through a, a fairly quick outreach.
So, um, you touched on a lot of the, the opportunities and the, and the people that are. Um, have energy behind driving those opportunities. Does anyone else have anything that they, they questions for the? The drive, Robert?
Yeah, I think first of all, the idea of a, of a, of a grant, a study like this is extremely good and useful. And I applaud everyone's hard work and bringing it together. Uh, it's an essential idea, a really good idea. Uh, I have a couple of areas of discomfort. If you look at the list of proposed uh, items in the proposal. Seven of them, only two of the seven in, in my eyes have any potential for bringing money in at all. And one of the reasons, of course, the school board and Stockbridge want to get out from under this building is because of the cost of maintaining it. And the cost of uh, energy, uh, keep it heated and electricity and whatnot. Uh, my sense in listening to the conversation here today and also in this, the tone of the proposal. Is that the dark side, that meaning the cost of this stuff, the potential liability of the town is not in the foreground. And I know, and, and Dune, you can stop me if I start coloring outside the lines, but I, I know that we're talking about the proposal. But the proposal and this conversation in a way is setting the tone and the expectations of the community for what this place is going to be or whatever. How, how to frame the, the dialogue about, about what direction it might take. And I think that if we don't take a very serious, realistic, hard look at the potential liabilities to the town that this project. Has, we are doing a disservice to the voters. I think everything sounds great. All the ideas are, they're wonderful. I lo- I love them all. Child, it all sounds great, but it comes down to dollars and cents. The town cannot afford to carry this, and that should be very clear. But rather than being the heavy in this, uh, I thought I would ask um, Vic, because he and I have talked about this. To step up and really talk about the downside of this, or, or, or rather than the downside, the realistic liabilities and costs of a project like this.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and, and you know, coming back to the notion of feasibility, feasibility. In terms of the economics of it as well as, you know, programmatically, is there enough demand in the valley? Or valley plus to make the programs uh, viable? So, the, the, the economic uh, risks or challenges are boiled down to basically two things. One is operating expense for the building, that is, heat, electricity, uh, shoveling the snow. Uh, keeping the building clean, that sort of thing. And uh, you know, that could be very expensive, no doubt about it. So from an operating, and you know, that's something that has to be paid for every year. Uh, and on the capital side, I think is probably everybody on this call recognizes that the building has a lot of deferred maintenance. So the heating system, ventilation, the roof, all of that um, has uh, need for repair or replacement at some point in time. And part of the, the feasibility study is to look at and, and identify what are the um. What aspects of the building should be addressed upon initial usage? What's going to be needed to be done in five years? What's going to need to be done in ten years? And put real numbers to that. Uh, and uh, where the money might come from to, to pay for that. Uh, you know, it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars uh, or, or more, well beyond that. But again, it depends on the, the, the actual use of the building. So, uh, our intention is to come up with, our, our hope is to come up with a plan. And, and hopefully the, the feasibility will, will help guide the way in terms of how to get there. Uh, where the building can be self-sustaining uh, through a combination of user fees, grants, donations. Uh, and, and uh, you know, that it all come together. So. Uh, it is, uh, as, as Rob is alluding to, it's, it's not something to be taken lightly. And I don't think anybody in the committee does take it lightly. I mean, Jeff, for example, has been looking at the energy costs and, and you know, they're significant. There's no question about it. It's not an energy-efficient building by any means. And uh, you know, but fortunately, there are grant, grant sources out there to uh, help address a lot of the things we're talking about. So, um, but you know, there is, there is significant economic risk, but there's also opportunity. Uh, to address those risks through uh, funding sources that come from outside of the valley as well as, you know. Uh, generous contributions uh, from individuals uh, in the area.
Yeah, and I think it's important to remember that this conversation tonight is about applying for a grant. To study those very issues and to try and really nail down some dollars and cents and, and. And, and identify the, in the clear light of, of, of paid research, you know, what, what can. How it all filters out.
Yeah. Rob, does that address your question? Or is there more that you'd like me to speak to on that?
Uh, I thought you might want to put the, the yearly figure.
Alright, Jeff?
Oh, I wasn't going there, but uh. Um, I, you know, it's hard to tell what it is. I only went back to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. That's the oldest, twenty seventeen was the oldest fiscal year. Um, the next year, both of those years were roughly sixty-eight thousand dollars for energy costs in the building. Electricity and, and heating fuel. Um, you know, I have great concerns about the quality or the performance of the building, its costs and operations. Uh, was a school board chair for Rochester in the nineties for sixty, for six years. Felt like sixty years. Uh, but uh, you know, I'm well aware of, of uh, how hard it was to get maintenance done on that. Improvements done on that. Robert and I are going to remember three tries at a budget in order to get the boiler fixed and. Uh, and that was with matching money. But we have a building that we can't just ignore. Or it will become like another large building up in Hancock. So I am really hoping that the folks on the, on, on a lot of the program side are finding things. That can help us with the cost of operations in that building. Simultaneous to looking at energy use in our public buildings across the board here in town. And, and seeing what we can pull in from Efficiency Vermont, from grants. And from volunteer work in this community uh, to, to make this happen. I'm hoping that we can utilize the full, full school. Um, we know from the Black River design that their analysis of it is that there are other ways to save parts of it. And to take and remove other parts. So, you know, I think this feasibility study is really important. And one of the other things I understand that it would do is also, if it finds things feasible. Start looking for the next grant level for implementate, design or implementation, what have you, and move from there. So I, I've got very big worries about the building. It's not an easy one to. Really improve. Um, but uh, we've got to do something or we're going to wind up with a mess there.
So, um, um, Frank, Severy, and then Dick, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, uh, will the, will the grant look at other alternatives? Not just if some of these things don't, uh, don't pan out. Um, can we, do we, does a grant cover things like a two-third razing of the place? And maybe keeping the auditorium and, and consolidating some of the town properties? Like maybe disposing of the town office and moving that to that building instead? I mean, I think that, that grant should look at alternatives such as that. Because if some of these things aren't feasible, then I think we should move in a direction where we might have to think about what we need to do as a town. Um, to consolidate some. We've got an old firehouse, our town garage is sitting in the, on the river. We've got the town office that is going to require a lot of maintenance down the road. And maybe, you know, that kind of thing might be in order if some of these things don't pan out.
I, I think that formally, uh, that would fall outside the scope of the grant. Because the purpose of the, the grant is to, is to assess a potential use of the building. Uh, not a, a, you know, potential for demolition or, or uh, you know, from that standpoint. Uh, and I think that within the scope, if we want to look at, as you say, you know, other uses, uh, like uh. You know, for the town garage or something, I think that would be possible. We could look at that. And it's, and they said in the, there's, we have a sort of a catch-all paragraph in the proposal that says, other uses that would be compatible with the, with the building, the program. Would be looked at as well. Um, and uh, you know, so I think that, but our, our. Our mission was to come up with a, a use of the building that would be consistent with the uh, uh, benefit to the community. And so that's what we've been working on. Uh, I know there is a, a cost estimate for demolition of total or half of the building in the Black River study. Uh, and you know, if someone wants to pursue that and, and you know, tighten up on the numbers, that, that could be done. But I don't think that would be consistent with the purpose of this grant. I understand, I understand the notion of, you know, a larger scope, look at all the potential outcomes of the building. But within this grant per, per se, that would be outside the scope of the grant.
So, um. Dick Robson had his hand up earlier and then.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that we, we can't lose sight of the fact that this would be an investment. In the future of this valley, that just like our schools are investments in the future. Uh, schools do not pay for themselves. But we say that they, they will in terms of our general population, over the lives of the people. Who go through those schools. So if we provide someplace in this valley. Who go through those schools. So if we provide someplace in this valley that draws people here. People who come from other communities to use it, people who wanna move here because it exists. These are things that you can't, you can't put in the budget. But they are very important things in the life of a valley that doesn't have a lot going for it. Other than we love it here.
Yeah, um, Robert, Mary, you know, comment you wanted to make?
You're muted again.
Uh, Dick addressed the point for me.
Okay. And Pat, did you have your hand up earlier? Pat Harvey?
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, we are working within the scope of this planning grant on, uh. Doing discovery and feasibility about this particular aspect of. What could possibly happen with the building. Um, that's what this hearing is doing. It's, it's addressing this one particular avenue we could take. That doesn't mean that we are not pursuing other avenues. Um, we are starting to pursue another avenue tomorrow morning. Some of these avenues don't really need a whole lot of, um, discovery, expl- exploration. Uh, they would be kind of cut and dry, um, if we were to, um, decide to sell the building. Well. We, we don't have to do an entirely long research planning process for that. This particular one is the one that is the most in-depth. Um, for obvious reasons, it's, it's very multi-complex and multifaceted. Um, and, and others are not quite as, um, difficult. But this is the one that we really need to help with a planning grant to figure out the feasibility of it. Um, but don't, don't take that as if we're not exploring any other options at the same time.
Robert?
Uh, Vic, would the, um. The location of the town offices be within, I mean, within the building be appropriate under this? Uh, uh, as, as an option under these, um, this planning grant?
Yeah, I think that, you know, as I said, we have a catch-all paragraph where other things beyond the, the, um. Defined scope that we've already talked about could be included and would be within the scope. So yes, we could take a look at that. If that's something that the, you know, the select board agrees that we should, uh, look at, you know, we could certainly.
Having a daytime presence down there, um, you know, Monday through Friday is a good idea. Town offices be there, possibly a council on aging office would relocate down there. And, um, some other people have responded that they're interested in office space as well, but. I don't think I'll mention them in the purpose of the hearing because it's also open, but all of that will go into the planning grant.
Um, Shar? You're muted? Yep.
I'm curious, uh, to know, um, if, if the grant were to be granted. Um, has the committee, uh, already identified appropriate, um, consultants? And how many consultants would you need? And is the grant sufficient to pay that many consultants?
Yeah, the, uh, we were given a list of, uh, recognized consultants from the, from the granting agency, from the. The Department of Community Development. Um, and we talked with the, the rep, uh, from that department about some of the. Strengths of different consultants. Um, we have not vetted that list yet. Uh, and we know that there are at least two other programs, uh, in the state, uh, that have achieved, have acquired these grants and have used consultants. So we have some people calling the, uh, the project in Bridgewater and where they converted a, uh. A, a school building to a multipurpose facility like we're talking about, and also in Wilmington. Did the same thing with a former high school building, uh, which has been a very successful venture. They got both the planning grant. Uh, and an implementation grant from the same source that we're pursuing. So yeah, there, I mean, I've, I've come to learn there's this whole sort of ecosystem of. Consultants and, uh, funds out there that, uh, you know, it's, it's new to a lot of us and we're, we're learning about it. But yes, there are consultants out there. And in terms of the cost, um, the, um, uh, consultant on loan to us from the Ron Council on Rural Development. Uh, Alyssa Johnson, uh, shared us a project that she worked on when she was the economic director, development director in Waterbury. Uh, where it's somewhat similar program and the cost of that consulting engagement was forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, so we think we're, we think we're okay, uh, as far as the work that we want to have done. It, it might take more than, uh, one single consultant because the different types of work we're looking to have done. You know, we're talking about facility assessment versus business planning versus fundraising, uh, uh, grantsmanship kinds of assessment. So. It's probably gonna, I'm sure it's gonna take more than one and, you know, maybe three different consultants, uh, to get all the work done.
Um, Jeff, get part, you had your hand up? You're muted?
Well, I was, I was just going to point out, and I think Vic did, that, uh, we have had assistance and support, professional support from the Vermont Council of Rural Development through Alyssa. In reviewing this, uh, and putting together this grant application as well as thinking through next steps.
And the feedback has been that this is a strong proposal. We've had positive feedback, just, just FYI.
Is there anything that?
Robert.
Touched on, or, or Robert Gardner, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I wanna, uh, play off of what, uh, what Frank and Patty said. Relating to this, to this grant, uh, from a pessimist standpoint. Five out of seven of your items are never gonna make any money. This is my own pessimist. And so. Uh, at some point, if that were true, uh, we would need to be able to, to shift our point of view outside of the box that we've defined. This, I think, is, is what these guys were talking about. We're gonna have to come up with something else. Because I think that it, it is essential to try to find a way to, to, to have that building, that large property in the middle of our town. Within the town's control. I think that's really important. I'm just very pessimistic about this particular approach. So I don't know, and, and maybe Vic can speak to this, if there's enough flexibility in the study. That, that the kind of thing Frank is talking about, the kind of thing that Annie is talking about, or something hasn't been thought of yet. Uh, Patty, uh, we, it hasn't been thought of yet because we're not thinking in those terms. We've defined kind of a narrow box for this thing. And, uh, I don't know if, if there's flexibility within this grant. To, to go outside of the box, or if that's just a whole nother effort and, and a whole nother conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe there is. And, uh, you know, again, we, we intentionally included sort of a, uh, you know, an all other. Category within the proposal so that we have the flexibility to look at other things. Cause, you know, once, as we get into this more deeply. I think it's likely that other ideas are gonna surface. Um, and consultants who worked around the state may point to a program in, uh. Wilmington or someplace else and say, why don't you try this? In fact, I, I happen to know. That the program in Wilmington where they converted the high school building, they have a combination of for-profit and nonprofit businesses in the building. So for example, they have their supervisor union offices there. There's a, there's a karate school. There's a, there's a bakery shop. And there's a, you know, a variety of other, uh, social service programs in the building. So. Yeah, I think there are some other ways to do this, uh, and, you know, hopefully get all the programs they're talking about and more. But, uh, but, uh, to answer your, back to your question, Rob, I believe, yes, there is flexibility to look at other ideas we just haven't thought of.
Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm, Pat mentioned tomorrow at nine. Tomorrow at nine, we're meeting with a developer to look at affordable housing. Don't get apopla-. What, what's the word? Apoplexy? Dick, I'm not advocating that we turn this, uh, classroom component into, uh, affordable housing, but. It's one of the things that we need to look at as a part of this grant. And identify things that we think could, can work and things that we know or think can't work.
We, we would, uh, be really amiss if we didn't, uh, explore that because right now there's so much money. Coming down to provide affordable housing. So, yeah. Patty set that up and that's tomorrow morning at nine. But that feasibility, if that's a, if that's a green light, that will be a parallel feasibility study. In the end, the town's gonna vote. The town's gonna decide. We are about getting information to the town, informing the town, and then the town is gonna decide. Well, we want this, or we want this, or we want something else, you know? Uh, the select board is totally, totally firm and united that, um. That it's gotta go to the town for a vote.
So the more information, the better, and that's what this grant is all about. Pat?
I'm, I think maybe I'm, I'm feeling we're, we're, we're getting tied up in, in what we're saying here and, and, uh. Everybody is, has got all ears. Um. Uh, all in all, um, if we wanna take a step back, w- w- what were we stepping back twenty-five years? Um, to the group of people that, um, said, let's do something with Pierce Hall. Um, that I believe was a twenty-year project. Um. This hopefully by no means is, is that type of project. But if there is a very positive note to spin on this, um. That wasn't supposed to be possible, um, to take a building that was built in the very early nineteen hundreds. And bring it up to the code of the year twenty, twenty-ten or whatever. Um. Uh, there was a lot of naysayers back in those days too. Um, so the one thing that I, I feel though, when I look at. That process is that this is a pretty determined valley. Um, and, uh, a lot of gumption. There, there's a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of faith and, um, a lot of depending on each other. So if there is a chance of this being successful, um. I would like to say that that type of attitude is still in our valley. And that it will be utilized and we're gonna take this as long as we can i- i- to the end to determine whether it's going to be a success or not. Uh, we, we won't quit on this. Um, I certainly hope not. Um, so, um. I, I think it's always willing to take a shot, take it to the end, and then we can make a really educated. Decision on what this building should do for our community in the end.
Robert?
Uh, uh, I would just like to second that, that not, not only Pierce Hall, but thirty-five years ago, there was community care talked about. Um, uh, it was, uh, um. Had a much more narrow scope. They looked at this whole, this hotel that was there and had a vision of having, um. Uh, seen, senior, um, uh, living there. And that came through. Again, that was many years in the making. Uh, lots of planning grants, lot, lots of, lots of community work and a lot of determination.
Catherine?
I wanna follow up on what Patty and Robert just said because Jeannie Levitan has been working on our committees as well. And, um. And part of the vision of the Arts and Learning Center is to not one hundred percent be building-based, but to be campus-based. So that as the programming is developed, we are hoping that the programming will benefit both Pierce Hall. And what goes on in the, uh, in the high school. I think that's a really important point. And we have gotten a letter from, uh, Park House, uh, totally supporting this. And we're due to get one from Johnson Care Home as well. Those are smaller facilities without the ability to really, you know, expand on activities. And they, uh, both organizations, uh, feel that this would totally, uh, broaden what they can offer to their residents as well.
Alright, um. Does anyone else have anything they wanna add to the discussion or, um?
Uh. I hear.
Um, I, one piece of, um, housekeeping, um, someone joined in on the phone that seven-six-seven-four-two-nine-five. Could you identify yourself for the, the records? If you heard me? Nope. Um, okay, that's, uh, I guess I can call that number later and figure out who that is. Um, alright.
I think it's, uh, it might be Harv Downs.
Okay, um, we'll figure that out. Cool.
I clicked in the community phone book, the reverse lookup for the phone numbers.
Um, dude, I have a quick question.
Yep.
Um, on the, um, the copy of the, like, agenda or whatever that Julie sent me for this meeting. At the bottom, it says, um. So is there a separate meeting after this? It says special remote select board meeting following public hearing and, but it's. So there's, there's something.
No, this is the special meeting that we're in right now, I believe.
Okay, it's something about a motion to contract with Two Rivers Watakechi Regional Commission.
Right, for the, the select board, we are ha- we are also having what is considered to be a special meeting to, uh. Bring forth a motion, uh, to contract with Two Rivers so that they can assist us in writing that grant.
Oh, okay.
A resolution in order for us to apply for the grant. So tho- those two are very closely associated with what we're talking about.
Okay, so it's not really a special, separate meeting?
No, I think, uh, did you, are you gonna make that motion right now, Pat?
Um, do you have the?
Me, after Nancy, you have a point of order here?
Well, I think that you've had a public meeting, which you, which you opened, and I think you have to adjourn the public meeting.
Okay, then, open, okay, make that, right, cause this is just the information.
Add that, that, that they will also administrate the funds of the grant.
Okay.
And they've been written into the budget, and the budget is also on the town website for anybody who wants to look at that.
Alright, so at this point, unless anyone has anything else they'd like to add to this, um, this hearing, I'd move to close this public hearing. And then, um, open up the, a special select board meeting to, um, approve this application to Two Rivers. Pat, you had the verbiage on that? Do you wanna make a motion on that?
Um, I think Vic might have it. Who has, who has this?
Um, I don't have any specific, uh, but I can, uh, just summarize, uh. Motion, it would be a motion to, uh, retain, uh, Two Rivers Watakechi Regional Commission. Uh, as the grant administrator for this grant if it is, uh, approved. And, um, and there's a fee of seven thousand dollars that's been quoted, and that would come out of the grant funds. It would not come out of the town funds.
Yep. So I move what he said.
I second it.
On favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And then a resolution. Um, the resolution, I believe, is that the town of Rochester is applying for a grant. For a feasibility study for the high school building. And I think it is as simple as that. We just need to be on record saying we approved that.
Actually, I think it, it, it's a little more specific than that, and I'll see if I can find it in the instructions.
So do we need to vote this in tonight, or can we do it on Monday where we get it all figured out to make sure the motion is correct?
But the resolution, well, see if Vic can come up with it right now.
You're in the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm looking for, uh.
We stay here?
Resolution.
I mean, this is, yeah, we're not, this doesn't have the executive session. We're making a resolution that we've all been, you know, about a subject we've all been talking about. I don't think we need to do this, and you, you don't have to stay here, but you can.
Yeah.
If Vic can come up with that, I.
Yeah, I think I can. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
Coming down to the right section of the instructions.
I think that's page on sixteen at the top.
Here it is. It's on page fourteen.
Oh, fourteen.
Oh wait, I'm sorry. Okay, here, let me just read this. Municipally should, uh, select the most appropriate resolution for the grant application. Uh, the resolution is to certify that it. One possesses legal authority to apply for the grant and to administer the program. Two, applies for a grant under the terms and conditions of said program and agrees hereby to enter into cer- certifications and assurances. Three, has a duly adopted and current municipal plan or community development plan, and that the project is consistent with the plan. Or has received documentation from the Regional Planning Commission that the project is consistent with the regional plan that you have. Has authorized a designated person to be the contact person to provide on behalf. Has authorized a designated person to be the contact person to provide on behalf of applicant all documents and information necessary for completion of the application and to provide such coordination as may be necessary for the application. That would be Two Rivers. Is understood that if the application is funded, the receipt of the funds as federal funds passed through the state of Vermont may require that an audit of the applicant be conducted under the provision of the Single Audit Act as amended. And that uh Vermont Council, Vermont Community Development Program Funds may be used to fund only a limited portion of the audit cost.
Um, excuse me, Vic?
Yes.
I can't, there's no way I could have written that.
Yeah, we'll send it to you.
Is there any way, I was, that one of you could email me that, just so that I could have?
I'll do that, I'll do that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is that it?
Patty, excuse, Patty confused me. Did she say that Trock is handling the grant funds or the town?
The town is applying, but yeah, the Two Rivers is going to um be doing the, the legwork and the, the logistics of, of you know, paperwork aspect of it.
Yeah.
So this resolution that Vic just read, is that something that the board is, is approving or?
Yes, the, the, right, the, the Select Board would need to approve that in order for the um applicant to be uh viable.
Right, right. So can we move to approve what he just read? Because I can't re, restate that very quickly myself.
No.
I move that we adopt the resolution as stated by Vic.
Yep, I would second that.
Oh, I favor it.
On favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There it is on public record, right on your computer screen.
And thank, thank you for offering to send it to me. I appreciate it, because that's the way I could write it all down.
So um onward in the quest for um information and understanding and, and um all, everyone's efforts is, is, are much appreciated here.
Thank you to everybody for all the hard work you've put into it. I, I very much appreciate it myself, just as, as a Rochester resident.
Well, as Dick said, we love, we love this community.
Yeah.
It's about love.
Well, I mean, I had three kids that went all the way through the schools there and graduated, and it broke my heart when the high school closed down, but I underst- stood the reasons, I guess, for that. So now I, I'm very, I'm very glad to see that there are ways that we can use the building um for good purposes now.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I think we've um taken care of all the business that we came here to do tonight and um not quite dark out, we're done. So um, thank you all, and happy spring and um. All right.
All the good work that you're all doing.
Everybody. See you Monday night.
All right, good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
Goodnight.